I think so just get started. Call to order the, what is today? The seventh, right? Call to order the December seventh meeting of the Cold Spring Planning Board. Very short agenda, we've just gotta do some minutes, we'll wait till member Hawkins arrives to do that. We have two applicants coming in, Lara Eldon and Sue Meyer for the open slots. You're gonna stay on as an alternate?
Right.
Right?
Right.
Good, excellent. And so we'll, uh, we'll talk to them. Uh, I think, and I think that's the only other interest that's been expressed so far, so Lara's coming at seven fifteen. Stephanie should be here shortly, so we can make some motions on some of these minutes, right? I think the, Davis Anderson. So this is the one you look at, the nine twenty eight minutes, right? I think the other three are, you're right, Anderson.
Just thinking about how nice of layout would be. And what time's the other person coming?
Uh, s- uh, seven forty five. So we're a half hour between them.
I have, uh, I have to be on the five o'clock train tomorrow morning.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, looks good.
Luckily though, it was the last one that had the, um, since it did.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, motion to, so that's Judith, myself, and Dave, a motion to approve, to adopt the nine twenty eight minutes. Nine twenty eight minutes as, as written?
As written.
Seconded?
Moved, and seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, so moved by Dave, seconded by, um, Judith. And then we'll have to, we'll have Stephanie do the, um, we've got the eight ten, which is Matt, Judith, Arnie. So this we're gonna have to do, I s- I had a phone call with the village attorney today, and he said that these ones where we can't get a quorum in a meeting, that we can send them out and just ask people just to reply in writing that they approved the minutes. He said we really can't a- adopt minutes that we weren't, meetings that we weren't at. So, eight ten was myself, Judith, and Arnie, so that will have to, eight ten will have to go to email. Nine fourteen was Matt, Judith, and Ezra.
No, oh, that's the one where we, we just voted and approved a lot of minutes.
Yeah, so that will have to do, um,
We'll have to send that out.
That will go email as well, Ezra can just, just approve it.
Yeah, there's another meeting with this minutes.
Nine twenty eight, here we go. Should be nine fourteen, nine fourteen, good. Eight ten. Ten twenty six. Ten twenty six is, we can do this one tonight, Matt, Dave, Stephanie. Matt, Dave, and Stephanie, that's good, so we can do ten twenty six tonight. Okay. So we have, uh, Lara Eldon who is interested in, uh, in the opposition, come on up.
Thanks.
Lara, I spoke briefly just so she could get a sense of like,
Want the chair?
Yeah, 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 please. Um, Stephanie will be here shortly, actually, Senator Hawkins. So, um, we just meant briefly just to talk about, um, just kind of what the, what we do and what kind of, what the commitment is, you know, we meet twice a month. It's, um, probably one of those slower boards when there's not development going on.
Not that one?
Yeah, exactly. There's all these things.
Yeah, I'm really sorry.
No, no.
No worries.
No worries, we're just getting started. Whoa. Did you say that?
Yeah. I thought to apply for the side plan approval.
Okay, so we have,
You're good at that, right?
Should I move around here?
You can sit.
They're comfortable.
I'm not, I'm ahead.
Great, so you wanna tell us a little bit about what you, um, about your background and how you think what the, what the fit is here? I think there's a great fit, so, um,
Yeah, I, um, I'm, I practice as an architectural designer, uh, been working, um, as a designer for fifteen years or so. I have a master's of architecture, and then before that I studied urban planning and, um, architectural history. Um, and then my first, out of grad school, my first, uh, professional experience was for a landscape architecture firm, so sort of became familiar with more site scale, uh, types of projects rather than just sort of building scale. Kind of always had an interest in just landscape and site analysis and sort of that scale of work. And right now I just have a small practice, it's me and one other colleague, I, I work from Cold Spring most days. Um, I go into the city about once a week, once every two weeks if I have, um, a meeting or a project that's relevant, but I'm starting to, uh, work up here more, so I'm around a lot, which I think is, you know, helps me be a good fit, potentially. And, yeah, I, that's kind of my background in terms of my professional, oh, I did, I worked in, I think right out of undergrad, I know right out of undergrad. I worked, um, uh, for a city bl- uh, city planning agency in New York City, um, the HPD, it's the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, so had some of my sort of formative, very early experience in, in urban planning, yeah. So, yeah, I feel like I have a little bit of different aspects of, um, experience in different aspects of development, site planning, construction, and architecture. Currently, my, my actual, my practice focuses a lot on, um, materials and, um, both interior and exterior, but this, the nature of working so s- on a small scale, um, is that I do very small projects and oftentimes it's interior, so I, I focus on sustainable materials, so that's kind of where I'm at, yeah. I have a, yeah, I live on Parrot Street, but didn't hear about, I guess, years ago now. I have a daughter at Halley in first grade. And, yeah, that's, that's where we are, yeah. My husband is a teacher in the city, so, yeah, that's, I don't know how much more information.
What's the teacher?
English, high school, yeah, high school, English, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, good. Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
I'm curious, in, um, in your role as a performer, um, in the previous, uh, positions, have you ever been part of a team of people who are applying to the planning board? And, um, have you ever been on the applicant side of?
Let's think, um, you know, uh, yes, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, so I, more so when we were work, uh, when I worked as a landscape, uh, I worked for a landscape architecture firm. Um, I worked on the Highline, that was my first project, yeah.
Oh, we.
It's very lucky to have that opportunity. Um, I was very low on the totem pole, but I learned a lot, and I, we were involved in, uh, putting together lots of presentations for, uh,
planning boards and community, um, organizations and, um,
but that was in two thousand, between two thousand and four and two thousand and six that I was working. And I, we were involved, it was a small, you know, the, the landscape architecture firm that led the Highline was kind of small, and it was their first big project, so even though I was sort of very new to working, um, we were all involved and got to see all different parts of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Right.
But anyway, you know, um, and then sometimes, I'm trying to think if, in the city oftentimes our projects would go before landmarks.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So if we were working on house, um, you know, townhouses, we've gone before landmarks and historic preservation, um,
Yeah, especially in a city where you really touch side plan, unless you're doing a commercial.
Don't say planning, yeah. Yeah, I mean, very briefly, I worked on like, uh, a, it was mainly an interior renovation and but I don't think we even went before planning, it was more, uh, we had, it was sidewalk work, I can't remember to be honest, but, um, yeah, I don't, I, since I can't remember probably the last time we went before.
This will be nothing like, after the city.
Yeah, this will be very different. I'm sure, yeah, I've already, I've had a little bit of experience, I filed a pro- so I actually, uh, work as an architectural designer, I'm not a licensed architect, so, but I do, I did work on a project in Cold Spring for an architecture firm that I still freelance for, or I had been freelancing for when I first moved up here. So I have experience filing, you know, I did all the legwork for filing, um, here, but that was with the DOB. Yeah, the Department of Buildings, not the, yeah, planning, so, yeah, so, yeah, that's, yeah, that about sums it up, sorry, long answer to this little question.
No, that's why you're here.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I'm interested in knowing if you've ever been in a situation professionally where there are people that are very upset at you and you just have to sit.
Yes. Um, and I've, I've tried to think, uh, very recently, there's often an adversarial relationship between, unfortunately, between designers and builders, which I try and, I'm pretty, I, I feel very collaborative when I work with builders, I really respect like that they know how to build stuff and, but sometimes you get into tricky pers- you know, just my, my role oftentimes if I'm doing construction administration is to say, well, this has been done wrong and uh, some, some people don't take that that well, and, um, so I just, I think I've, my approach most recently is to just sort of stay calm and sit with it and then, um, move the conversation along, sort of, I like, I, that's been, but it's always, every, every situation's different, so, but I think that's been the most, um, effective way of dealing with those kinds of more emotional aspects of the job that can arise, yeah, is to just stay centered and not really get drawn in. It's not always easy, but I think I've, you know, I think I used to probably internalize it more when I was earlier in my, in my career, um, and I would, yeah. But now I can, yeah.
We do have encounters with developers and with planners who, let us just say that they do not think that we know anything or have any value and we're just kind of in their way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's the attitude, that's, I think that's what arises and, you know, where if you, if you, if you are doing, just doing your job or doing what you're volunteering to do, um, and you raise an issue, and if it gets in someone's way of how they wanna do it or what their bottom line is, or then they can get angry and you just have to, I don't know, I, I think I, I was pretty, I was pretty, um, interested to s- to see how in the last time that this happened, it happens almost, I mean, it, it happens on some projects. I've, some projects you can really have a real, um, uh, just, you know, very positive understanding with the builder and it does feel very collaborative and, but on some projects where it, it isn't, I, I was interested to see that I was able to just sort of move on and then come back to it later and, and we could, and it, that felt like in some, something new in terms of how I could deal with, with those situations, yeah. So it was good. Yeah, I would imagine that, yeah, people would get angry.
Yeah, well, that's kind of the role of boards, right, is to kind of be the, kind of the safety valve and, you know, and people can often see that as obstructionism, and in some way that is part of it, right, because it is to say, well, we have to do the hard look first.
Yeah.
Right?
It's a middle person kind of role, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, and the hard look typically takes time, and time is money, and, you know, so, but, um, it, we just kind of work through it, and I think it's been, you know, regardless of what's kind of being slung.
Yeah, how does it usually go, like, has, has there been?
We don't, it, it typically would just be on a large development project where there'd be, and, you know, we really only had one, and maybe there'll be another one.
Yeah.
But regardless, any application is just, you know, where, you know, we have a few now where they're, the, the first hurdle is gonna be demolishing historic structures, um, in the district, um, and whether or not that gets approved, and so obviously it's, you know, folks like to, um, pursue with their projects, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so, but the whole point of boards and zoning and planning boards is that there's some sort of a plan, right? That, you know, that the, uh, you know, the gunshot doesn't open up next to the daycare and the, you know, and, you know, the bar and your, you know, the, you know, the basement of your house, you know, so I mean, it's, you know, it's, um, it, it's for the, kind of the better good, right? But it's not often seen that way when, you know, when an applicant's in front of you and wants to do what they wanna do, whatever their reasons are, and even more so when it's business and it's dollars and it's, you know, so we just kind of calmly kind of, you know, sit through it. I think the board's done a great job, I mean, obviously, I'm sure you're familiar with, you know, at least the big one. You know, that as it, as it kind of drag on and basis basis, we're just really, we just apply the code, I mean, it's just really,
Story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not obviously the answers people want.
That's what kind of fall back on.
Usually we're just about parking.
Yes.
In some instances too, though, you do get, like, they have to send public notices out to surrounding neighbors.
Right. Right.
You know, and in some cases, the one I can think of is on, uh, Lower Main Street. You know, people always don't want something or other.
Right.
And it, it's, you know, again, we're bound by the code.
Yeah.
So if it fits into the code, then you gotta go down that path regardless of what, you know, their neighbors, you know, think or want.
Emotions are, right. Mm-hmm. Yeah, you have to be kind of impartial, I would imagine. It's been interesting watching all the activity between zoning boards and planning boards on the Phillips Towns scale lately, um, and really,
And it's, it's, the people are really engaged here.
Yeah.
Like, whereas a lot of times you just wouldn't really see things, but, um, people, people watch, and so, and obviously, yeah, I mean, look, I think a lot of people are a little change averse, so when stuff comes up, um, like David said, we do the neighbor notification, so that's kind of the blast zone, so then say, well, there's gonna be a public hearing.
If, if the corporate tax rate really gets changed, Kearney will run out of projects upstate and be back here within a year, I bet.
Yeah, so that's the large marathon, really the only large parcel left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that one's quite large, that's probably fourteen percent of them.
The, the developer's been very busy on affordable housing projects, which
Oh, okay. As.
May, the funding may get cut substantially on those, so he may find himself back in Cold Spring. Which is not good, but, but we have to be prepared to, you know, stand by the code.
Yeah, and large, yeah. Yeah, enlarged.
It's, what's it, it's, it's the former, it's a,
It was a battery plant.
It's a battery plant, so what's it, um, designated as right now?
Super fun.
It's a super fund, so there's a lot of steps, like, according to those drill, so there would be a change in,
It's, it's light industrial, yeah. You, yeah, yeah, you'd need, if you wanted to do something other than that.
You could build residence in, in every zone, in every district, um, you can build residences. I think, with the setbacks, we figured you could build like six or something.
As soon as, yeah.
So every, every zone permits residential, um, and then it, it's sort of depending on what zone, you have certain compliance. That limits the, you know, that'll sort of prescribe the maximum number or whatever. He, he would come in for a change of, lots of variances on it. And, um,
Yeah.
Unless he just wanted to build some houses.
Yeah. Interesting.
Or, wait, what was it, storage, self-storage? I told him, we love self-storage.
We do?
Yeah, sure.
I didn't know we did.
I wanted to see his face when I said that.
So did he already, so there already has been a?
No, no, there was, there was years ago that ended up, uh, that didn't end well.
He's tried a couple of times.
And so I think, um, they're waiting right now, and I think part of it is there's, the code update committee is working on the code.
Right.
And I think they're, I think they might be waiting to see that, that's intended, um, pretty heavily, and so, um, but that would be kind of the only, the only large develop- develop parcel left.
Large, yeah.
But we'll see, I mean, we said there's something like Carolyn's Flowers, obviously, because it's a, it's a commercial application, that's a full site plan.
Right.
Um, much less so over on Market where the, um, Carriage House, they wanna deconstruct and reconstruct. And then change some uses, so we, we wanna make sure we get the parking and all the uses.
And Butterfield could always come back for a change of use.
Yeah. There's also light eye.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. There's, do you think in Hail property, it's on Fair Street, it's used to be a car dealer's?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I looked at that recently, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's been sort of, you know, kind of set up every now and then, somebody will, they'll be, some.
There's been some talk, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've heard through the architect grapevine.
Is that still alive?
Um, I don't think so.
It did, yeah, it seems like there's been way too, it's been too quiet, yeah.
No, it seems like it dissipated, yeah, it was probably over the summer that I was there, 'cause I remember I wore the wrong shoes for, anyways, yeah. Um, but, yeah, I don't think, I don't think, not that I wear that, it seems like that, yeah, that, they, they have been holding on to that property.
They have.
Long time, yeah.
Been paying, paying for it for years.
Yeah. Well, only, but in some ways, right, but not others.
In some ways, yeah, not, yeah, it, it is falling apart.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a, that's a good, interesting spot.
So there are things, right now it's very quiet, but there is potential of being a lot of activity.
There is potential, yeah.
Yeah.
Any moment.
And everybody in Cold Spring has an opinion.
Oh, yeah. And then they'll share it with you. I know.
And then obviously we see all the Main Street change of uses, right, you know, 'cause they're, you know, there's, because you have to come in for a change of use,
Right.
and like Judith was saying, you know, the biggest thing that we really do is parking. Um, it's almost, it's, I think it will only ever happen twice here where they can kind of make parking, um, on Main Street. You know, so mostly it's just working with the parking waivers, yeah.
Only so much, only so much space, yeah.
What are the changes, change of uses, like going from residential to commercial, or?
So you have a commercial storefront, and it's whatever, like, maybe it goes from, you know, from retail sales to dining, dining and food.
Right, okay.
Right, or vice versa, you know, whatever.
But we didn't have to do the law office, that went from being an art gallery to a law office.
It didn't come before, was not referred, it was not referred.
Which art gallery went to become?
Oh, it became, no, no, Thingy's, um, it went from,
Sixty-sixer?
Being the,
It went from, uh, it went from art gallery?
Which you would think would be from retail to office.
To retail.
It was an antique shop.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right, then it went to retail, but it's now an art, it's now a law.
Remember, the retail was, uh, collectibles. Now it's an office, hmm.
And I would have thought that would have had to come to us.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting too, and I think that, you know, we, as we talked to the code update committee about what the, what all that looks like, 'cause even with the, that's a change of use, it is, because it, you're going from retail to office, right? Although it's the same parking requirement, but the question with these, so in two thousand and ten, the, the village board came up with a payment in lieu of parking waivers. So you take the village code and you count the number of spaces that are required, then you, you know, there's one grandfathered on Main Street, and then typically you can provide no parking on Main Street, there's only a couple businesses that were able to. So the question is when that, but a paint, uh, those waivers are only a one-time use.
Okay, so once it changes use again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and then the question is, well, if they were never applied and the use didn't change, should they still be re-upped? 'Cause it's a different applicant. So the village board, and I think code update committee is gonna look at that, I mean, I, I'd kind of be more in favor of some sort of a use, you know, an operating fee, a business operating fee, it's really hard, um, just emotionally to calculate a number, to sell somebody something you don't have. You know, I think it's just very difficult for them to say, okay, I'm buying twelve parking spaces, but where are they? Um, it's reasonable, you know, it's, it's a reasonable response, and you're like, well, you know, it's earmarked to deal with parking problems, and so one of the, one of the, one of the uses of the funds was to buy the parking meters down at the, at the lot, and those are creating a, a real positive revenue stream, and then could that help with other parking, you know, solutions, meters on Main Street to force vacancy? And so there's, there's thought behind it, but just the visceral kind of response to, wait, you're selling me ten of, of what?
Yeah.
You know, so it almost seems like if you could just change the name and just say, you know, it's like a business operating fee and your impact is, you know, you look at the impact of like a, a hair salon or as opposed to a grab and go place, I mean, or if you're coming in for professional services and you're there for an hour, two hours, or whatever, you know, so just to figure out what the impact is and then a fee that's kind of related to that, as opposed to saying, here's twelve parking spaces on paper, right? You know, and the cars need to,
Go find them.
It's, and I, it, it's not, it's not that, that's not completely fair because there was thought behind it, and there is, and it's better than what was before, but it's just a little hard to kind of sell. So I think it would be, you know, and then, like I said, those parking, you know, should they then be re-upped, right? That if the next applicant comes in and even has the same use, right? Which is a lot makes, is a much stronger argument for a business operating fee. You know, like in Philadelphia, there's a use and occupancy tax, right, and it's a percentage of the, it's a percentage of the lease. You know, so that just is a little bit more palatable than to kind of say, you know, can you pay for those ten parking spaces that don't exist again?
Yeah.
Right, and again, and, you know, I mean,
Yeah.
but it does go to something, and if there's thought behind it and the revenue does do some good, um, but it's, so the question may, it may be more just a, you know, just a branding than something else, but that's a lot of what we do, is looking at the parking table code. Butterfield, the change of use was all about parking, right, because it's just, you gotta just comply with the code, 'cause we don't,
Right.
we're not allowed to, you know, we're not allowed to come up with our own interpretation, we can interpret the code, because we read the code.
Yeah.
But we're supposed to really just be applying the code as we understand it.
Right.
So the code only allows for, you know, for, for whatever's in the code, and even though you're on Main Street, if it's, you know, one parking space for, you know, you know, for every three seats, well, then you count the chairs and that's the number of parking spaces that are needed. So I'm not sure what code update is doing with the parking tables, are they dealing with parking tables or not really?
Actually, you know, it's a good question, I don't think that they are.
Yeah, 'cause we also don't have,
I don't know, I don't actually, I don't know if, I used to know this off the top of my head, but I don't know that parking is part of the,
Well, like, we also, and unfortunately in our code, because it's so old, it only allows for like doctor's offices in a residence.
Oh, interesting, yeah.
So when you really, but it's good because it says, okay, there should be a parking space for every treatment room and one for every waiting, every chair in the waiting, it makes sense, right, because then you're at maximum occupancy. But it's only in a residential district, so when we, you know, when you have a medical office, which is not gonna be in a residential district, then it has just to be treated as a professional office, which is one co- one space for a hundred and fifty square feet, which is far lesser than really the impact of a, of a, of a medical, like a busy medical office. So, um, those are the kind of things that I think they're working to kind of make it more real world. And as we talk to the, when you lift suburban code, because it's already written, and give it to a village that wants a, you know, a ten-foot setback or whatever the rhythm is of the block, which is, you know, ten or fifteen foot setback, but yet, I forget where this came from, was it Terrytown? No, it wasn't there.
No, no, I, um,
It was one of the river, it was down, down river somewhere.
It was, is it Chappaqua?
Chappaqua, oh, interesting.
Chappaqua. You know, so like the front yard setbacks are forty-five feet, nobody wants to see a forty-five foot setback, but yet you have to get a variance to not do what nobody wants.
Every time. Right.
Right.
Right, so the, that's what they're trying to, you know, grant, and, and obviously in the village, you're, one of the first things that rots is your porch, right? Because it's, you know, it's all, it's turnings and end grain, and so, you know, just to go work on your porch, you touch it, you own it, right? You gotta bring it to current code, well, now you need a variance for your, for your front porch that is pre-existing non-conforming
Right.
because you're touching it, even though nobody wants you, nobody wants you to take your fifty foot setback and go like forty-five feet
Push it back into the house, right, exactly, yeah.
and put, you know, your, you know, your, uh,
That's interesting, yeah, so it's not the most effective, because it's,
Your death is made blood, yeah.
Yeah, the code was adopted, um, in, in an effort to kind of preserve what was here.
Right.
Because I think that there, at the time, there were some, um, there were some, uh, prospective developments that, um,
Would have changed things.
That would have changed, yeah, and, and so there, there are some places where, like the, um, Matt mentioned, the doctor's offices and homes, and then there are some like other sort of, um, these kind of outliers where it, it seems like the code is very specific to allow for something, and it's, and it is because that thing that it allows for existed in that one space, that there was a doctor's office on, you know, in these three buildings
Right.
in these three homes.
Yeah.
There was a grooming house up on Morris, you know, that, so that's where, why these things are permitted on the code, but nowhere else.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, it's interesting, how, what is the timeframe of the code, or who's, who's rewriting, there's a code,
Code update committee, I, well, I don't think they have a,
Do they have a timeframe, or?
Um, yeah, there is a, there is a time, there, there were milestones that were set, I believe they have, um, I believe it's, the milestones have been revised, but it's taken longer. They just did, um, the second of three sections that sort of reviewed, um, sort of work that they had done on these topics. And they had a meeting last month, um, yeah, last month, I just, uh, at the end of last month, twenty-nine. And the, sort of the talks were presented and some of the changes were, were discussed in a very high level way and, um, online, you can get on the website some, uh, material to sort of do some comparisons and like that, and see what they've, they're changing, and they've got one other section, uh, to do, and then they'll have to sort of package that and do some, and and there'll be a local law woman to be put in, and all of it, all of those discussions and those proposed changes will need to be publicly heard, they haven't been publicly heard.
Right, okay. So it's a little ways, yeah, yeah.
A little ways, yeah, yeah.
So for now, operating under the current code, which has its, it usually proceeds.
Yeah, operating, uh, the current code is silent far more often than it,
The current code is silent far more often than it needs to be.
Yeah, it's true. Meaning, meaning it doesn't deal with things that are relevant.
Well, any situations that we have, like when we're just dealing with drainage issues and it.
Doesn't say.
Didn't.
Address any.
Didn't support what we wanted it to say.
Right, what would make sense, yeah.
One of the things I find interesting is, with the exception of big developments and, you know, when you're dealing with somebody that that's their business to make money.
Right.
When you're dealing with the local residents, more often than not, they are very, very easy to work with. I mean, I can't, I can think of one instance where we had community input where a restaurant owner wanted to do something, and the people had complaints, but they were complaining to the wrong board.
Interesting.
We had to send them elsewhere. But, I mean, for the most part, I, I can't think of any other circumstance that we've had where people weren't easy to work with. So, yeah, makes it easier than dealing with people that are being adversarial and jumping all over you and everything.
I feel like maybe the interests for the most part are aligned, whatever, everyone who's here.
And, yeah, and also, you know, with volunteer board, it's not like you're dealing with, you know, with consultants that are trying to make things difficult or drive up fees or, and it's just, it's just people that are just trying, in some way, I'm really just giving back, obviously, right? Just wanna do something for the community, obviously, we all value, you know, what we have here, and so I think people just, you know, give back in their own way, so. And I think the applicants understand that for the most part. Um, it's not always, it's always not the answer you want, you know, we try to get people to yes some way.
Yeah.
But it has to be within the code.
Board bent over backwards, most of the time.
So, I think that's good, is that anything else, or, any for us, or?
I, yeah, it sounds interesting.
So you're available as?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, as of, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so we gotta make a decision, we got, um, one of our members moved out of the village.
Right.
So, yeah, so that just happened.
Our daughters are in school together.
Oh, right, 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 yeah, I wasn't aware, actually, you made it in, so I was like, wait, I didn't look ready, but I guess they're in.
They're in, yeah.
So, uh, I'm sure they got it ready quick, cause I heard they were working on it around the clock.
Yeah, I just saw them out there this last one.
He's gonna be working on it for a while.
Yeah, so they're, they're in, um, so he's out, cause obviously the residency requirement. Um, so we have two positions open, Dave's gonna stay on, um, as, um, as an alternate. So we have his vast experience and can drag him in when we need him.
And because I'm very flaky in my schedule.
Yeah, Judith travels a lot.
No, flaky is really the right word to use.
Just busy.
She travels a lot.
Well, she's very responsible.
I'm responsible in other places. Thank you.
They're the non-volunteer positions.
Yeah, yeah, as long as government gets funded after tomorrow night. I work in a.
So lights stay on.
Oh, cool, that's okay, cool. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think I have any other questions, I think I'm, I, we chatted briefly, yeah, I just, I think it would be an interesting way to sort of understand, um, our village better, and, you know, I'm relatively new, but I've been here long enough that I'm ready to sort of dig in.
Excellent, great, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you for, for, yeah, for this opportunity.
Thanks for coming in, thanks so much.
Did we have some nice blocks Sunday other morning?
Yeah, when you're done, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Hey, Thomas, nice to meet you all.
You too, have a good night.
Or see you again.
Good night, thanks.
Good night.
I don't wanna dress like her. I'm having serious envy.
And I don't know, other woman do.
Sue, aren't you like similar to Campbell?
I know, yeah, that's all I know. Oh, do you know one, cause she's near backyard.
No.
That modern house building to the hill.
No. This is my neighbor, yes, this is your neighbor Sue.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Stephanie Hawkins, we've met before.
Yes, I'm Sue.
Hi, Matt, Francisco, hi, Missy, Dave.
Hi, Dave.
And this is Judith.
Judith, yeah, of course. See, I don't recognize people when they're in a different place.
She's very.
We, we don't meet at different places, I guess.
At the village, at the village hall.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, as you know, we have a couple positions open, um, we've just spoken by email as all. One, one of the numbers has moved out of the village, and then Dave is coming off the board, he's gonna stay on as, um, as an alternate. Um, Stephanie is new, Judith and I have been here for a little while, a few years.
In the, on the board?
The village board, yeah, yeah, we've been in the village for a long time.
Yeah, it's been, it's been two years, right?
Yeah.
Well, we all, we all kind of started at the same time.
Exactly.
Some people strong-armed us.
Wasn't me. So, uh, so have little, um, openings now, so that's obviously what we're, uh, what we're talking to folks on. So you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself, about, you know, your interest of the board, the planning board and the village in general?
Uh, yes, I have a short resume, I don't know if it's needed, but, uh, we are still fairly new to Cold Spring. Uh, we've moved in for about four years now. Uh, well, no, since we did the construction and so on, we lived in our house for about two years now. Um, we are, I believe, completely committed to Cold Spring, cause we never had lived in Cold Spring or around this area before, and we passed by, we loved it, we bought a lot, and we built our house, yeah. So I think we are very committed to the community here, we love it, we totally enjoy the environment around here, you know, the nature, the people, the, the village and so on. Um, I have, uh, well, since we came, we have participated in lots of meetings, village meetings and so on and so forth, uh, and, uh, I think I need, you know, if we want to keep this village, you know, in a good way and continue building it to a better, um, way, we, I need to do something, and I would be very much, uh, like to, uh, to be involved with, uh, with the village, um, either being, you know, planning, uh, I wanted to get to the tree community, but you know, they currently do not have any, uh, positions.
Those openings?
Uh, I don't, I don't think, so far they haven't had any, you know, because, uh, the village had had a nursery, uh, now it's not going anywhere, but it's directly across the street from us, so we volunteered to water.
Yeah, I was part of that, um, when, uh, yeah, Char, I thought there was a tree farm manager was, uh, I thought that role was filled by Charlie Daley, I thought that was his role.
And, uh, you know, there, there weren't people cutting the grass before, but first it was Joe, and then I think he sold his house and, and moved away.
Oh, yeah, Joe Russo. Yeah, yeah.
And, and then it was a young man who just, you know, cut the grass around it, and, and the, the nursery had not been visited by anybody, but it's, you know, we see it every day, we volunteer, we say, we want to, you know, we can water it, do whatever. But I, it, I, I think we are gonna be here for a long time, I am retired, my husband retired. Uh, my kids love here, um, I think, you know, they're gonna stay here for a long time too. Uh, it's a great place, but there are, you know, room to improve, and, uh, you know, I've, I've been traveling a lot to different places, I read a lot, and I love history. Um, I love nature, just, you know, this place is nice, but I, I would like to contribute. That's, that's why I said, you know, I, I would like to do something, either this board, other boards, or some meetings, or, you know, those kind of things. I'm more than willing to, to contribute something.
This is the best board.
Uh, well, the best board is, I don't know if I could get in, you know. If you, I, I'm, I did, that you bring up there, I'm gonna talk to some people about the tree thing, because I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that it is being left alone, I thought the reason we.
Stephanie put a lot of work in that.
Passed the law and appointed that board, was that little trees would be.
Yeah, well, we, you know, last time, uh, there was a meeting of some sort, we, uh, came and then, and then, you know, they said, you have anything to say, and we said, well, we're asking what's going on, and, uh, again, they've, they said, well, there are a few bare spots in the village, and Campbell definitely is one of them. But on one side, uh, facing the, the open field, there's no tree at all, but the nursery is in there, so, uh, there's a fence, and then there's the street, but in between, there's the sewage, I believe, the village or.
Yeah, the sewage pumping.
But anyway, uh, so they, they said they're gonna check out if, um, or where we can plant trees, but then I counted how many trees in there, you know, I'm ready, I said I'm willing to.
I think, yeah, we had planted some, I mean, I don't wanna make this about the tree, tree nursery.
Yeah, but this is what I'm saying is, you know, there are, there are different things we can do in this village. I am willing to, uh, to.
So, so, um, so you're here, there was an opening, uh, what kind of, um, have you done any studying of planning issues or, or code issues?
I won't say I have done anything, but each time there is a meeting on the codes, on the planning, on the Butterfield and all these things, all these meetings we came, uh, I mean, from almost day, almost day one of, of our, our, um, coming, we, we have come to, cause we're really interested and concerned about, about the, the thing, and, uh, you know, especially when the Butterfield thing is, is up there. It was, uh, you know, what, this one should not be in the village, you know, some, but I, I mean, we, we came when it was already being built or, or, and so on, but the thing is, you know, the, there are other things. So that's why I, I said, you know, there, there are things I can study, I can, I can read.
Well, we do actually have a requirement of continuing education for this board, we have to get, I guess it's only like three hours.
Four.
Four hours, four hours a year, but, but there's a lot of thi, things on the web to stu, that you can study for seeker. I mean, it's not rocket science, but you do have to learn it. We, we actually let Matt know all the laws and we just not, um, but we do.
I hope not. That's your plan?
It's worked so far.
Gotcha, two years, two years running.
I am due for my seeker update, though, I have to say.
I would take a seeker class too after the first, I love free time.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I'm willing to, to learn, uh, a, a lot of the things. I don't think, you know, everybody comes on this board and knows all about the codes and so on, but I think it's the first you have to be willing to do something.
No, without question, and it's not, and all perspectives kind of add value, like Ezra who left as a teacher. It's good to kind of have, you know, folks that, you know, that are, um, and also they have a, I think what's also interesting is they have per, they have a perspective as applicants too, that they're owner, not that you need to be an owner, renters are certainly welcome, it's just that when you've come before the boards and you kind of get a sense of how, you know, how the architectural review process works, you know, through HTRB, and you get a sense of how, you know, the planning, you know, how the code enforcement reviews your plans and then refers them out for, you know, to other boards and kind of get a sense of, oh, okay, this is kind of how this all fits together. Cause planning, typically, a lot of us will live in the village all our lives and never come in front of the planning board, right? Because we're not really gonna, we're not doing anything that would require a change of use or a site plan amendment, um, we're basically just.
Not what you guys have, you replatted two, two lots.
Yeah, we, we, we combine our lots, yeah, there, there are different things, it's, it's really.
Oh, you guys go before planning?
We're fresh, we're completely fresh, we, we never stayed in Cold Spring before, not even overnight. And then most of the people came, you know, they like rent, and then, you know, before people walk in front, they're always, you know, we say, oh, we rented and now we decided to buy, or, you know, like Doug who walks a dog, and then there are other, and we bought two lots and we start building right there, and then, but, but that's, you know, I, that's how committed we are.
Very good.
Also the best house in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's amazing, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, with, it's, yeah, I, another thing is, I think, over the years, when, um, everything goes with the environmental protection, with, you know, the, the clean energy, this and that, there are a lot of things to do with this town, cause if, if you think about it, you know, from the old industrial revolution days to now, we improved a lot, but there are still a lot of things.
Lot more room, yeah.
Yeah, we, I think that's something I would like to do, because, you know, our house started with, uh, with the passive house, um, and, uh, I think it's, I think it's needed, uh, you, while you stay with history, but history is history.
Yes, exactly.
To go forward, you know, how are you gonna make this historical town, but at the same time, go ahead?
It's gotta be sustainable.
I think that's something that's planning may need, that's where I think, you know, I, I would like to contribute. That's, that's why I, and then I saw Marie one day, she said, you guys should get involved with the village things, and there are members that's, uh, you know, needed to, so I said, okay, I will submit an application. So that's, that's why I'm here.
Very good.
So, um, one of the people on this board, um, misses a lot of meetings. So my question to you is, will you be able to come on a regular basis?
Okay, um, I, I love that there's, you know, like fixed.
Second and fourth, yeah, second and fourth Thursday of the, of the month.
Yeah, um, I think in general, yes, um, I do travel, and if I'm away, um, sometimes we're away two weeks, three weeks, uh, but it's not like most of the time we, we're here. I am retired.
Okay, that was my, my question.
Yeah, I, I do things.
I mean, everybody's allowed to take vacations.
Yeah, you know, like, uh.
Except Judith.
You know, end of the month, end of the month, we're going somewhere, but, um, and, uh, we used to live abroad a, a lot, uh, for many years, so I still have relatives back in China, so, you know, I, I do go back to see them.
Um, I don't wanna make a guess here, but you aren't a US citizen?
Yes.
Good, cause another applicant, we thought, we just had to rule out, because it turned out he wasn't a US citizen.
Okay, I was, thirty-five years.
Okay, just being careful here.
Yes, uh, yes, that's.
Cause you lived in Singapore, right?
No, we, we lived in, uh, well, first we were in China, we were in Taiwan, we were in Hong Kong.
Oh, my goodness.
I knew it was somewhere else.
We, you know, we were all over the place, yeah, the Far East, and, and, so when we retired, here, here we are.
Wow, that's an interesting choice.
It, yes.
The exotic Cold Spring.
Exactly. Joe is, uh, uh, he was, uh, raised on, uh, in, in New York.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but, you know, we, we, his parents had a house up in, uh, Kingston, so we would come to visit them, and, you know, for, and we sent the kids to camp and so on, you know, we, we, in general, liked this area, but we never passed Cold Spring, there was one day, you know, we, we, we rented a car, we were going somewhere, and then he said, let's go turn on this road or something, so, but it was hot, and then, you know, we, we, we weren't happy because, is, we're going somewhere, why we go, and all of a sudden say, hey, this is a good place, so, and all four of us agreed right there, so we drove around, we were up on the Linkgate, up on Hill, and, uh, all over the place, uh, through Phillips Town and so on, and then we were still abroad, so I checked online, I said, well, you know, we're gonna retire, what are we gonna do?
Wow.
And there it is.
We're gonna retire to Cold Spring.
And, uh, and we found the, the lot, asked questions, uh, first five agents answered, then asked one more question, three came back, asked one more question, only one came back, and.
That's how you know you have a keeper.
And we kept, kept asking questions, because the advertisement said, you know, the house, the this and that, because, you know, we're always interested in the, uh, energy saving, the, 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 and the, this says geothermal, solar, you know, green energy, and so on and so forth, so I said, okay, where, where is the joint? So I said, okay, where, where is the drawing? There's no drawing.
Oh, really? It was a, it was like a, a spank.
Yeah, yeah, they, they said, well, so finally they said, oh, okay, if we have a buyer, then maybe we'll discuss with the buyer what it. So there was nothing, zero, I mean, empty lot. Uh, so, and then I said, is, is there another one? And they said, oh, the, 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 the owner wants to keep the other lot. And finally, I think it's Craig, uh, Craig, what is his name? But anyway, so.
Oh, Craig Rothman?
So he agreed.
Craig Rothman.
So he agreed to sell the two lots together.
He had, he had been, let's just say that the prior planning board had made him design the most impossible design for that lot, and what they did with it is like so much better.
Well, when, when we looked at it and said, oh, you know, this, the, the rock is about half of the room, this big. And then, but we loved the rock, we wanted to keep it. And then they said, oh, you can, you know, blow it up or. They're wrong, they're wrong, they've been there ten thousand some years, why should you blow it up? So, but anyway, that's. So that's how we chose the thing, and then the people said it's impossible to build a house there.
You wanted your own version of Frank Lloyd Wright's house in, in Pennsylvania.
And then we, we looked around, uh, we interviewed architects and James and he heard of, for the ones. So we said, so you're in the village, if there's anything wrong, we knock on your door.
Did you know that they're designing a studio for us now?
Yes, I, I, just James told us just a few days ago, we said, that's wonderful, yeah.
See, you, you, you're spawning, uh, pretty soon there'll be all these little passive houses because of you.
I do hope so, it's James's own office, yeah, you know, so, but anyway, this is, this is a, the, the story of us. Uh, just fell in love with Cold Spring and, and hopefully we'll be able to.
So, uh, are you familiar with reading site plans?
Uh, in a way, yes, through building our own house from.
So you've had at least one site plan experience?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You may have, it, you know, depending on whether or not we have a seat for you on this board, you may have to do some educating.
I will.
Realize that, okay.
I, 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 first, I'm more than willing to be educated.
Okay.
And to, you know, to learn a lot, um, and, you know, it's, it's always, it's always good to learn something new. And, uh, that's, that's, I have a very simple resume and we, I have.
And, and what is your professional job experience?
Uh, I was, uh, university professor for over twenty years. And I had some, uh, work experience in, uh, international law firms. Uh, I was, while I was in China, I was running, uh, helping an American company running a factory in China. I was their CEO for a few years. And, uh, when we were in Taiwan, we were consultants about Chinese law because Taiwan and mainland China.
So you were teaching law?
Uh, I wasn't teaching law, no, I was teaching history and, and the Chinese language, um, and English. Uh, but I've been a teacher forever, uh, and, well, first teacher and then doing something and then it's a law firm, and, you know, doing all kinds of things. And then, but when the kids are older, I, I kept, twenty years I was in Hong Kong U. I mean, people usually don't work in one place that long, but I was twenty years and now, yes.
All those students, they know me, you know?
Thousands of them, uh, actually, when they were in Paris, somebody came and said, hey, professor.
Oh, really?
And then I was somewhere and they said, oh, do you still remember me?
Oh.
And they said, they, she said her name, I said, of course. And, uh, you know, that was, uh, from forty years ago, I hate to say, but, yes.
Wow, that's lovely.
So, so, you know, I, I've been a teacher forever, but in between there are different things. But as a teacher continuously, this past twenty years. And I, I'd always been interested in, in different laws and so on. Because, because of my, uh, work experience at, um, two big, uh, you know, Baker McKenzie and, uh, Kogir Brothers, uh, they had their offices in, in China. They needed, uh, translation Chinese law into English and so on. So I was working, uh, with them for quite a while. But I insisted on part-time because, uh, my kids were very, very young. So, um, I said, I'm not gonna work full-time for a law firm. I'm, you know, part-time and I'm willing to do a lot of things, but I'm not gonna be here as. So that's the, I did a lot of things.
Yeah, great.
Very good.
Thank you, I didn't know all that.
Not many people know, but it, it doesn't really matter, but, but, you know, talking about that's, that's basically, uh, my, uh, my resume. Very simple, but.
When, when we're done here, I have a Shanghai Shex story to tell you.
You gotta watch out for good stories. Great.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
Great, next one.
You should also, you and Joe should know that, um, recently, I mean, that we've been to town meetings, um, the town board meetings. Every now and then, they recently hired a, a climate smart coordinator and, um, Roberto, I think Roberto worked on your.
Did they, he worked on our house?
Yeah, um, so he's the climate smart coordinator for the town. And he's responsible for assembling a task force of people and volunteers to work on different projects.
Good.
So, I don't know, maybe you and Joe also wanna look into that.
Meeting last night, he was supposed to be here, but he didn't go. And he sent Joe an email at the passive house.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, but anyway, so there were different things, so we, we, he is in touch with us.
Oh, good, 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 so you should just know that, cause it's sort, I think, you know, he's somebody who was also working on your house. And I think that was a, kind of an informative experience for him and a lot of people.
And then our neighbor, you know, she has the best, uh, the flower, the spot over along the street.
Why have you ever seen my gardens on the top, though, around the house?
I've never been into your house, I have seen Steve planting the, the grass there. I said, Steve, why you, you know, you do different, you, maybe you should do moss.
You should come up and look at the flower gardens when they're, they have flowers.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, it's, you know, so along the street where ours is just still gravel and stuff, but they will be there.
It's getting there.
See what we.
Yeah, it's getting there, wait, two years.
Gardens don't happen overnight.
So, anyway.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I'll tell you my story real quick.
Oh, no.
Is there anybody else in line?
I was in Vietnam, I went to Taiwan on, on, I ended up going here seven times. The first time I went, I went with four other friends of mine. So we were in Taipei and we wanted to go to Sun Moon Lake, alright? So, we didn't know how to get there, we know, we didn't know the trains or anything else. So we decided that we were each gonna rent a taxicab and we were gonna race from Taipei to Sun Moon Lake. And we've, one of the taxicab drivers spoke broken English and was able to translate to the other three taxicab drivers. We asked them what the fee was, which was ridiculously cheap. I mean, it was like less than five dollars for a three-hour drive. So we said, whoever gets there first gets five dollars from each one of us on top of the five dollars.
Wow.
Well, we go flying down the highway, right? We're the, we're the second car, alright? The first car gets a flat. So we said, that's it, you know, nobody can beat us, cause then we turn in. And as we turn in, there's armed guards, alright? Because Shanghai Shex Pal- Summer Palace was right near where the hotel where we were gonna stay. So they couldn't beat us, they couldn't get past us. So I'm sitting in the car feeling, you know, fat, dumb and happy, and I look out in the cornfield and the cornstalks are going down. The guy who had the flat tire went around the armed guards in the cornfield and beat them.
Oh, no.
I said, you're lucky you didn't get killed.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, yeah, it actually would have been for twenty-five, twenty-five.
Yeah, that's probably a month's salary there.
The fir- the first thing they told us.
Back in the seventies, yes.
When we were in the, in the planes, before we deplaned in the, the airport, they said, whatever you do, don't eat in the alleys.
Oh.
First place I went and the only place I ate the whole time I was there was in the alleys.
That's the best.
Oh, it's unbelievable and cheap.
Yes.
And you could eat all night long for a dollar.
Yes, that's, that's, but Taiwan is a, it really is a very interesting place. We were there in the eighties, late eighties, and, uh, but they were trying to change the image of Chinese food being cheap and so on. So they opened a restaurant in the alleys, in Snake Alley, um, a nice restaurant. They serve similar street food and beef noodles and so on and so forth, but they use wedge wood. This is really funny.
On wedge wood?
Yes, it's really interesting, you get this, you know, all these street noodles with all kind of.
And it's on this elegant, it's for a slimmer.
It was really.
The only disadvantage for somebody who didn't speak the language was try to get across the people in the alley what you wanted to eat. I remember one time I went and I wanted steak.
Dave, I have a five AM train.
Next time I see ya, I'll tell you more.
Thank you for.
It was a great meeting.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Any, any, any board, anything, you know, if I'm not.
Well, we're only this board, so.
Stephanie will check it out.
It was a nice meeting.
Nice meeting.
Thanks so much, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Tell Joe hello, please.
I will, thanks.
I knew you could talk all night.
You know that.
Do we, do you guys have minutes?
Yeah, the, the eight, ten and nine fourteen will have to go to email, they're for approval. We were able to approve nine twenty-eight before you came, then we have this, which is ten twenty-six.
Oh, the, yeah, oh, I read through this.
Oh, is it good?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve the ten twenty-six, oh, wait, who else, who else is there?
Um, uh, Dave, Dave.
Oh, you already read it, right?
I read it.
Ten twenty-six, okay.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the ten twenty-six, minutes as written, moved by Stephanie, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, so we'll get two done tonight.
Thanks, Thomas. This is a nice tablet.
Close, sir, close, yeah. So, uh, anything else, any report for members, nothing, nothing?
I attended the code update committee public meeting on the twenty-ninth of October. I won't go on, we can talk about it another time when you, after you come back from your far-flung.
I was there.
Oh, you were in front of me, next to Steve.
Your own reports.
Anyway, um.
She's updated herself.
Do we, as a planning board, need to, I mean, should, should we be sending an emissary to their weekly meetings?
I heard you volunteer.
I, I will do that.
I did hear you volunteer, say you would do that.
I'll send you some of the stuff that we, that we've sent them.
Do that if you feel that it would be worthwhile, I'm happy to report that.
I make the motion.
I think it's just great if you wanna go to one more meeting.
Well, if it's use, I mean, I think it would be, because the thing, because the kinds of convers- the kind of conversation that we had tonight with Lara and the, talking about the, you know, the, the questions about parking and the parking waiver, that, that's the kind of, I think that's the kind of message that needs to be socialized in that setting, so that.
We've funneled that stuff over to them in, in informal and formal channels, like the, um, parking waivers, for example, the, the legislative intent is, was clearly for commercial applications in your existing form.
Oh, she knows.
Not for expansion, yeah.
I'm like, come on, let's go.
And then like the, the, we're, the code silent on simple lot line adjustments, that really, there should be a code compliance check to just kind of say you're not creating any, any new non-conformity or increasing non-conformity. So that, I, we've funneled that stuff over, I'll go through the emails back mostly from the board to Marie.
Okay.
Just to kind of say, this is what the board kind of thinks you should look at, um.
Yeah, cause anything that you guys have experienced.
Five things, but it's five kind of big things.
And they repeat on you like a pickle.
Yeah, well, that's just it, it's, you know, especially.
Parking every other way.
Yeah.
Right, okay, and do you know if those, if zoning board and HTRB are doing the same kind of thing? I mean, I know HTRB's working on its own code, but I.
Um, I was actually, something came up that made me think that zoning board maybe hadn't during that meeting. But then again, there were zoning board people there, so.
Yeah, I mean, Aaron was there, maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe, I'll connect with Aaron and find out if he's, you know, kind of making note of the kinds of issues that, you know, the kind of issues that are thorny, that can be resolved and kind of in the smoothing, smoothing up.
Anything else?
Well, we need to make a recommendation to the village board on these applicants, don't we?
Well, I don't know, if people wanna think about it, we could, we could discuss it in email too, if you guys wanna give it some thought.
Are we allowed to discuss things in email? I guess we are.
I think, I think we, we gotta vote on it, don't we?
We, we'll have to, yeah, we have to come back to another meeting then.
Well, let's just do this tonight.
Okay. Uh, any discussion or? I mean, I think Lara's very qualified, I think she'd be a good add, I mean, similar, you know, obviously, reading, reading plans is a big piece of it because if you can't read, you know, if you're not familiar with them, um, but it's good to have people that, you know, that don't do it. I mean, it wasn't what Ezra does, and it's also people that just kind of, you know, approach it as a resident and homeowner and say, you know, kind of like, and it's, it's, you know, I think it's good to have people that actually aren't immersed in that either because then that way, they come at it completely differently, not as a, not from the professional side, but just to say, just common sense and, and, you know, and, um, and their own experiences, they are good feedback for the board to have as opposed to just, you know, like the old planning board, there's a lot of contractors, you know, so that's, that's a, that's a real, that's a, that's a different frame.
That's one lens.
You know, and then a bunch of architects wouldn't be good either, right? But I think having a blend.
My opinion is that if we do get Marathon, she should be on the board, Sue should be on the board. Cause there will be nothing more intimidating to King Carney than having two adjacent property owners.
I actually would think though, I mean, that does occur to me, if Marathon comes, I, I actually would be.
Only from voting, we wouldn't have to recuse ourselves from discussion or the meetings.
No, that's, that's true, but I, your vote, I mean.
So two of us wouldn't be able to vote?
I think.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna make a decision on a, a member because of a, you know, projected, you know, application that, you know. But, I mean, I think that if you, it's, cause there's plenty of other applications, right, that'll come, um, you know, we gotta deal with, you know, one twenty-six main, the thirty-five market, we're not.
Oh, you're talking about Marathon.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just really think that it's gonna hit us and it's gonna hit us hard. And so we can't just sit back and say, oh, this is an easy board, nothing ever happens. On the other hand, two adjacent property owners are gonna be more invested than, you know.
But, but, I mean, if you're voting for something that's within the code, what difference does it make?
Well, I don't know, I mean, we'll have to find out that if being across the street, do we have to recuse ourselves?
Right.
That would be a legal question.
I think that the question, I actually think it's a, it's a, it's a risk, it's just a, it's not like it's an illegal or legal, it's a risk question. That if you're, if you're, like, the recommendation would be that you would, might need to recuse yourself if you felt like you could not make a fair, you know, if you could, if you couldn't be impartial or perhaps for the appearance of, of partial, of partiality. And so, yeah, you'd recuse yourself because if you didn't, it'd be, the recommendation might be that you would then, you know, sort of expose, there would be risk of a suit if it went not the way the applicant wanted and.
A predetermined bias, I mean, you kind of enter it with a bias, that would, that's where, where you get into.
Yeah, we'll, we'll duct tape your mouth and put a smiley face on it.
Or you could just like hold like a picture of Martha Stewart in Florida.
But I, I thought about this a lot, and then the fact that she came in, I was like, okay, is that good? I think it's good, but I had already thought, well, if he comes in, I would talk and probably not vote. So if we had two people that wouldn't vote, what would that do to quorums?
Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tou- I mean, you still have enough for three, but it's not, probably not the best review of an application to have.
On the other hand, she's coming onto the board when we don't have an application for Marathon in front of us.
Right.
And we don't know when it'll come.
And that's what I'm saying, I think we should really just kind of say, she's. And that's what I'm saying, I think we should really just kind of say, she's a suitable applicant, and obviously we need, we need, we need, we need members.
Yeah, we need members.
To make, to make quorum.
She's smart and inquisitive.
And she may be the only person of color on any village board. Would, do we have any people of color on any board?
I hadn't really thought of that.
Well, I'm a diversity expert, so, and it's really bugged me that it's been all white people. Well, that's who we have in the village.
Yeah.
I mean, we we draw from our neighbor pool.
I mean, I guess you are sort of a.
You're also, you're a woman.
You help us a little, but I would really be happy to have a woman of color.
I think she's smart, she's inquisitive. I wa- I worried a little bit, that I was like, wait, are you, do you really want us? It's happened like she wanted other things.
We probably should actually ask about the tree board. I think if somebody tells you, I really prefer another board, I don't think it's great to.
I think it would be a waste for her to be on a tree board if she.
Tree advisor, yeah.
She's been a work in law and all.
Yeah. Yeah, I was surprised, but she, but that seemed to be her passion, was really the tree, you know, but so they, there's no openings, there's no.
Yeah, there, well, there's no openings on the, on the board per se, but I, there isn't a lack of work to do. I mean, come on, the whole point of that enterprise was to create a board that was then to organize and enlist volunteers to do things like say yes to the mires if they wanna help out with the trees.
But I guess we shouldn't be kind of, you know.
But um.
Let me list, telling them how to, I mean, she's here to apply to this board, so I mean, that's, that's her application, so. And she's not just a very, she's not just a very simple letter, basically just saying.
I'm interested.
I think we should, we need people, we need people.
Are there other people? There was that fellow on my buddy.
US, US citizenship, you have to be a US citizen.
That's why I asked her, because I knew she had lived in everywhere.
I didn't know, and she's been there forever, and I didn't know she just came here, yeah.
They haven't lived in the US that long, I mean, four years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty funny.
Yeah, no, I think they'd be, they bring different perspectives, I think that, you know, obviously Lara has the the technical and the the professional and and obviously Sue is, you know, the, and obviously she's been through an application and is very interested in how that works and what the experience is like. Cause obviously, we want some people that are customers too, and realize that we're really, these people are really kind of are our customers.
We're gonna have to spend some time teaching or, I think.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, Ezra didn't, you know.
No, and Ezra asked really good questions.
Yeah, well, that's I say.
Ezra was a really great.
Frame of like, you know, when you do this as a business, like, you know, you know, Dave's so focused in on the real details of site planning grading and all this, and all this stuff, you know, that, you know, the rest of us will miss. But then he wants somebody that just says, well, what are your neighbors gonna think? Or what are your, you know, what are your, you know, just the, just, the different perspectives add a lot more, you know, conversation around a, as opposed to just a professional frame.
I think that's a key to a good board.
I think so too, I think that, you know, Ezra was, you know, Ezra's an educator, she's an educator.
Yeah, it's just too bad losing Dave and Arnie.
We're not losing, we're not losing Dave.
Will you still come to meetings?
Yeah.
Is that a promise?
Well, I'm a, I'm an alternate. So when you're, when you're traveling. And I'm not fishing, I'll be here.
Okay, alright, alright.
In the warm weather, you don't ice fish, do you?
Nope. I golf in the ice.
Golf?
I golf all winter long.
Oh, really?
Yeah, go to High Point, where Pennsylvania, New York and New Jersey come together. Golf courses open all year round, provided there's not snow on the, on the course. We played, worst day we played was sixteen degrees, the wind was blowing thirty miles an hour.
Oh, jeez.
It was chilly.
Okay, on that note, can we close so I can go home?
Oh, we, do we need to vote to recommend?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Motion to recommend the, our applicants, Sue Meyer and Laura Eldon, to the village board for appointment to the planning board.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
You know, that's very good, alright, great, so I'll send it over. Um I'll ask Lara just to do a, just a quick letter of interest, cause we shouldn't send it over yet.
Can I move that we close?
Motion to close.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.